Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our May 30th Webster Board of Education meeting. Would you please stand with us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever so strong.
Board members, you've had the chance to take a look at the agenda. Are there any alterations or changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, may we have a motion to accept the agenda?
So move.
All in favor? Okay, the agenda stands. At this time, we do provide our audience with the opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to speak to the board? Seeing none, we'll move on. We will take a look at our student liaisons first, and I believe we have two from Thomas tonight. So Juliana, if you want to start, feel free to.
I was actually going to have Lorenzo start and give my final closing to my last time with you guys.
That's great.
Good evening, board members. As our Titans prepare for their final exams this year, many events and award ceremonies are taking place, and our students are very excited for summer vacation. Next week is Award Week, as we have sports awards on Monday, Titan Scholars Awards for our freshmen, sophomore, and junior students on Tuesday, and senior awards on Thursday. At the end of the week, our students will have their senior breakfast, and then they will leave for Camp Corry for a fun-filled weekend with members of the staff. As many of you already know, Dr. Brian Weller will be leaving Webster Thomas at the end of this year to work as the principal of Pittsford-Sutherland High School. We will miss him very much as our assistant principal, but we are happy that he was promoted. Congratulations to tennis partners Josh Kowalszak and Lugan Troops, who are going to New York City for states. They are the first doubles tennis team from Webster to qualify for states, and we wish them good luck at their competition. In track news, Eileen O'Hara won the Section 5 title in the 8 and 1500 meters. Eileen is one of the top runners in the nation and will continue on to the state tournament. Other state qualifiers include Evan Garvey, Sasha Andrievsky, Mitchell Baller, and Nicholas Niemtuh in the 4x800 meter relay. With less than 10 days left, all of Webster-Thomas is ready to be finished with the year. Luckily, it won't be long until exams are finished and everyone can enjoy the beautiful weather. I look forward to seeing you all next year and hope you all have a great summer.
Good evening, board members. With Memorial Day recently celebrated, the academic year at our school is coming to a close. Thomas, however, still has a flurry of finals ceremonies and celebrations. In the music department, several final concerts have occurred this past month. In addition, several music groups performed at Daring Lake this past Friday, and despite the cold and rain, we had a wonderful performance. Our jazz ensemble has been invited to play at the end of June at the International Jazz Fest outside of Eastman. In our athletic department, there have been a plethora of informational meetings for all different sports in preparation for the fall season. In addition, all our spring sports have been successful, especially in achieving scholar-athlete status for the state of New York. Cumulative GPA for our spring sports teams is 93.21. Odyssey of the Mind, after winning the state championships, competed in the world finals at Michigan State University and placed ninth out of 55 teams. The speech and debate team had members that qualified and participated in nationals this past weekend held in Philadelphia. In general, other clubs are drawing their meeting to a close with final celebrations and elections of officers for the upcoming year. As most of you know, Webster-Thomas High School has been recognized as one of the top 300 schools in the nation. Its ranking has jumped 151 places in one year, outranking most of our area schools. This doesn't surprise me because I've always felt I've been given unparalleled opportunities and shared them with remarkable students, teachers, and staff. It was with great pride and humility that I've had the opportunity to be Titan for these past four years. As student liaison, sharing the accomplishments of our school with the Board of Education and our community has been a true honor. Thank you for all that you've done to make us Titans proud. I would now like to pass it over to Schrader.
Good evening, board members, and thank you again for having me back to share what's been happening at Schrader these past couple of weeks. It's hard to believe that we are down to our final six instructional days for the 2012-2013 school year. On Monday, June 10th, classes will be holding review classes, so students may go in to get some last-minute prep for their exams either later in the week or the following. For the first two weeks of May, over 1,000 AP tests were administered to Schrader students. We would like to thank all of the AP teachers in our building for what they do and congratulate all of the students for completing the exam and for taking on college-level courses while still in high school. The evening of Saturday, May 11th, the junior prom was held at the Hyatt Urgency in downtown Rochester. The evening was full of laughter and enjoyment. It will be a night that no attendee will forget. The junior class is currently holding their elections, and all students are encouraged to run or join this upcoming year to help plan all the fun senior activities, such as the senior trip to ball tomorrow in November, senior breakfast, and senior ball, and much more. Our current senior class has tickets for their breakfast now on sale, as well as for their senior ball. Both are set to take place on Friday, June 7th. Speaking of student council, our student body officers were chosen this past week, with our president and vice presidents continuing. Myself, Josh Hill, will return as president, Megan Herbst and Ellie Orsini as vice presidents, and we welcome Claire Boland as our secretary. We congratulate all of them. On May 22nd, the National Technical Honors Society chose 16 Webster-Schrader students to be inducted into the society. All students were recognized by their teachers for their outstanding achievement in career and technical education. Congratulations to Alexa, Nicole, Selena, Connor, Miklo, Caleb, Rachel, Kevin, Renata, Mary, Kristen, Vinnie Amin, Jacob, Justin, Cory, and Trenton. The following night, the annual 9th and 10th grade awards night was held and honored many of our students for their academic achievement over the past eight months. We hope that these students continue their achievements and strive for more excellence. Our junior class awards night is scheduled for Wednesday, June 5th, and our senior awards night is the following night, on the 6th. This past Tuesday, 102 sophomores and juniors gathered in our auxiliary gym to begin their training for Link Room, a freshman orientation-adaption program. It aims at helping incoming freshmen make the transition between middle school and high school easier. All students were excited and ready to help the freshmen start their time at Schrader off right. Finally, our Warrior family would like to congratulate Mr. Keith Greer, one of our school's social workers, for being honored with the annual Helen Guthrie Memorial Youth Advocate Award. This award recognizes someone who has excelled in the promotion, enhancement, and support of services for youth involving substance abuse issues. Thank you for having me here tonight for the final time this school year. I hope you all have a wonderful summer, and I will see you in the fall.
You know, one of our very, well, our very first core belief states, "Students first", and each one of our students is invaluable. And tonight, the Board of Education has the opportunity to thank some students who we think are true examples of this belief. So we wish to thank Juliana, Lorenzo, and Josh, not only for your leadership, but as liaisons to the board, you give us a perspective that school board members simply do not have, because you spend every day in school. You've served well as an advocate, not only for your school, but for your fellow classmates. We wish you the very best, and we're very Webster proud of you. So if you would please accept this little token of our appreciation.
I just want to add that Juliana has been with us for three years running, right, Juliana? And so this was her last report. I don't know if we've had a student stay with us for three years and report out so diligently from their school, so we are so appreciative, and I did have the honor of having dinner with Juliana and her parents, because Juliana was named the Outstanding Senior for Thomas High School. And Lauren Fracanti, who often reports for Schrader, was named the Outstanding Senior for Schrader High School, so we all had dinner together at the Monroe County Outstanding Seniors Dinner in Brockport last week. So it was interesting to me that those students who choose to serve in this way are also really recognized as outstanding from their class, and it was really a lot of fun that evening. And Juliana, thank you especially for three solid years of service, and we are going to miss you. You've done a wonderful job.
Thank you so much. I'll miss all of you guys, and it's been an honor to really come here and tell you what's happening at our school and just share the information. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lisa, that's a tough act to follow.
Mine will be brief. We last board meeting recognized the Oak Tree winners, and I am going to recognize through my highlight, three nominees. And the first one is Cheryl Concordia, who's a fax teacher at Willink. While creating a positive school environment is important to Cheryl, for her, the first priority is the growth of her students. For her, classroom learning to become good citizens goes hand-in-hand with instruction. The other teacher that I am going to highlight is Todd Stahl. He's an art teacher at Thomas. Todd's a passionate teacher who challenges and pulls out the best in each of his students. He's an outstanding educator who possesses the ability to build interpersonal connections with each of his students. And then the last teacher I'm going to highlight is Claudia Ushold. She's a speech teacher at State Road. Not only is she an educator, but also a mentor, a kind and thoughtful teacher. She's committed to all her students, making sure all her students understand what strategies work best for them while tailoring interventions. Her mission is to assure all her students learn. Thank you.
I do not see PTSA here tonight. Nope. Okay, then we will move on. We now are going to see a very interesting video that highlights not only our Webster-Central School District teachers, but also our students. So Kate and Melissa, and Mary Grace.
So we are here to share a video that was highlighted on the New York State Education Department's own website, Engage New York. And the video was created as a collaboration between our enrichment specialists, Kate and Melissa, and the State Road 5th grade team comprised of Marcy Adams, Alexandra Collison, Caitlin Kraft, and Diane Horn. And I think Alexandra is here representing the team. They worked together and created a unit, an interdisciplinary, Common Core-aligned unit, and I will let Kate and Melissa speak a little bit about the process.
Thanks, Mary Grace. In December, we were contacted by a state representative inquiring about how Webster is aligning to the Common Core. This prompted a series of discussions about Webster's professional learning and how teachers were engaging in aligning their instruction in the classroom. This winter, we collaborated with the State Road team, as Mary Grace just said, Alexandra Collison, Caitlin Kraft, Marcy Adams, and Diane Horn, to write and teach an integrated ELA and social studies unit. The state representatives came and videotaped portions of the unit and gave us valuable feedback about what they observed. Since that time, we've been able to share this feedback with several teachers across the district. The video you are about to see showcases Webster students engaged in rigorous Common Core deep thinking and discussion. It was an honor to be a part of this project, and we are excited about the collaboration that will be ongoing as a result.
And so here's a little bit of the video.
So when we divide our text into meaningful chunks, within that chunk, as an active reader or someone who's interacting with the text, you would identify.
Help you out, okay? So Bana, why don't you tell me what you've just figured out about prejudice?
Well, we just figured out, so we wrote on, it says, "Some Americans face discrimination", some vicious discrimination, some Americans face discrimination sometimes because they were Catholic, Jewish, Black Irish, or Asian. So we kind of figured out that prejudice means, because it has different, it has different, yeah, different kind of people. So we figured out prejudice wasn't a very nice word, so.
At your table groups, I want you to turn and talk to somebody sitting at your table and show them one of the text annotations that you picked out or something that you wrote down, a part of the article that you found to be powerful.
What sentence do you want?
148, or this is the last sentence, the first paragraph.
And I, um, I underlined, like other groups of immigrants, many Jews have come from the United States to find work. Other Jews come to try to find, to escape prejudice that they face in Europe because of their religion.
They're lumbered, like holding houses, paper and toothpicks.
Yeah, but the logging, that supports what the lumber, the paper, and the toothpicks are.
I am so impressed with the details that you noticed, the questions that you had, the responses that you shared with one another. I am really impressed. You really persevered and pushed through this task, so you should really applaud yourselves.
And so that is not the video in its entirety, but those clips clearly show our students engaged in rigorous material and making meaning for themselves. Nowhere there did you see a teacher trying to provide the definition of prejudice. Students were digging into the text and figuring that out for themselves, and that's what the Common Core is all about. So I think we should be very proud of this achievement.
We are.
I think it's important to highlight that this video is on the state website. You can see the Engage New York logo, and so when you Google "Engage New York" and you can find this Webster video, which is commonly visited by teachers around the state. So teachers around the state are watching this as a model. We also have other states that log on to New York's site to watch this teaching as a model. And since this video was taped, where there's a lot of interest in the work and how we did this alignment, so we are starting to share that out at different state forums and regional forums, and it's exciting to see the hard work of our teachers and the fact that they dug in to the text of the Core and said, "How do we make these shifts", is now being highlighted for other teachers around New York. So we're very proud of the work that all of our teachers have done, the team from State Road that's here being represented, and Kate and Melissa's work, and that's another one of our core values, is collaboration, is that we're smarter and stronger together. And this work is an example of that. It's many minds coming together, making this happen, and implementing it in the classroom. So it's living our core beliefs and shining that light in our area, in our state, and for other people in the country about what great education looks like. So congratulations to everyone involved in this project.
Thank you. Mary Grace, you can stay there.
Yeah, and Melissa and Kate are going to stay here, too.
Oh, okay.
Joined by several others.
All right, we'll give you a few seconds to get the several others up here. For our audience, we'll be taking a look right now at our K-5 literacy goals.
Okay, so we have quite a team here today, and we are excited to share with you the great work that we are doing in K through 5 literacy, especially surrounding writing. And so I'll have everybody introduce themselves, and then we'll dive right in into the report.
My name is Herb Heinz, and I'm a literacy specialist at DuWitt.
I'm Patty Pollack, Grade 2 at Blaine North.
Kate Hassel, enrichment specialist.
Melissa Phillips, enrichment specialist.
Anne Primo, literacy specialist, Schlegel Road School.
Roseanne Kulikowski, 3rd grade, Clem Road South.
Kathy Lawson, Grade 2, Clem North.
So several years ago, the many stakeholders in the district created a literacy vision and a three-year plan. And so we continue on track with that vision and that plan, and this year, our goal was to focus in on the writing side of the balanced literacy continuum. And to that end, we have adopted the Lucy Cawkins Unit of Study as a resource to help us meet the Common Core standards in writing. Lucy Cawkins Units of Writing, Study are a writing workshop model, and every classroom teacher in every building, K through 5, has utilized the units this year. And so what we are going to do today is share some of the writing and practices that are a result of that.
The Writing Workshop is an instructional model that allows students to have choices in their writing and uses the process of planning, drafting, revising, editing, and publishing. The workshop is designed so that students are invested in their writing and take ownership of each step. A typical lesson will go something like this. First, the teacher engages the whole class in a five-to-10-minute mini lesson. In this lesson, the teacher presents a technique he or she wants students to focus on and try out in their writing. Then students begin independent writing. They may be at different points of the process, and the teacher spends the next 30 to 40 minutes conferring with individual students or small group of students, depending on the need. The teacher may teach or reteach a specific skill to an individual or a group of students in a targeted area. And then finally, the last few minutes are spent on a group share, highlighting a few writers or a group of writing.
He used a technique I want to share with you. Michael used a technique I would like to share with you, and Andrew did as well, okay?
It's spooky in my basement, there's spiders in my basement, there's mice in my basement, eek. There's creeks in my basement, there's crocs in my basement, now I'm not in my basement, phew.
I can't think about anything, I'm so distracted. Should I watch it, or should I not? I love it, it gets in your head, I watch it every day. I zone out sometimes, not a lot, although I want to, but it's hard.
Well, what was special about her listing? Things. There was something special. You're right, it did not rhyme. Jonathan?
She didn't mention the show.
She didn't mention the show, so that was similar to Michael's. He didn't mention that it was a doll, except for its title.
Okay, the sharing that you just saw was on poetry, but of course, there's other units of, other units of study that we focus on, too.
So as we focus on the units of study, we are really honing in on the college and career anchor standard that asks students to write routinely over extended frames, timeframes, and shorter timeframes, and that's exactly what Writing Workshop does. It also addresses the major forms of writing addressed in the Common Core, narrative, opinion, and informative. So we have some samples of that type of writing.
And I teach 3rd grade, as I've said, and this year's been an important one because of the shifts in the Common Core. And one of the biggest is simply the shift to read and write more nonfiction. One example of this in 3rd grade takes the form of not only learning how nonfiction text is organized, but also using the nonfiction features in an expert writing piece. So this is what you see here. Students took something that they were experts in and then decided how to organize and to use nontext features or nonfiction features, such as headings and subheadings, sidebars, captions, diagrams, and glossaries, in their own writing. Another Common Core shift is the use of evidence and multiple sources, and this is a great tie-in with the writing expectations now in social studies and in math. This focus has enriched students' writing in informational and persuasive writing, and using evidence and multiple sources to support one's claim has made student writing much more valid and exact. Students in all grades are writing opinion and persuasive pieces on topics that matter to them and are spending their writing time using the evidence to support their arguments. And as a teacher who's worked with the Writing Workshop model these past few years and who is now incorporating the Common Core shifts, I can say that the Writing Workshop model promotes student choices, which in turn highly motivates the students. And working in small groups gives each child, whether he or she is a reluctant or an accomplished writer, a place to practice his or her craft at their own level and to be challenged at each step of the process. I've noticed a big growth in the writing stamina students have developed, and with the focus of the shifts, their writing voice has become stronger and clearer. Using the Writing Workshop model has transposed groans at the mention of writing to excitement bubbling over the chance to share writing with others. Students actually see themselves as writers, and for a teacher of writing, seeing this newfound passion and confidence is very satisfying.
There are three types of writing in the Common Core state standards: opinion writing, informational writing, and narrative. The second-grade sample for opinion writing is a book review that was produced in class. We started by discussing what an opinion is and how sharing your opinion with reasons to support it can be helpful to others. We looked at online book reviews, restaurant reviews, and toy reviews, and discussed how people often refer to published reviews to help them make choices and purchasing decisions. We discussed the characteristics that we found most helpful in a book review: a short summary, a favorite part, and a recommendation to others who might enjoy the book. Students self-selected a book from our school library that they wanted to use to write their review. After reading the book, we worked on writing a short summary with just the most important parts, without giving away the ending. This can be challenging thinking for 2nd grade students. They shared their opinion or their favorite part with support for their claim. Finally, they gave a recommendation to others who may enjoy the book, as well as a rating based on five stars. We wanted to make our book reviews authentic and share them with the school, so with guidance and collaboration with our school librarian, Gretchen Pulver, my students typed portions of their book reviews into the library database. When a student's searching for a new book using the computer database, there's now several book reviews written by their peers. Students were excited and motivated to write the reviews, knowing that they would be read by other students in our school, and they'd be helpful to others in choosing a book. Writing these opinion pieces with support and in authentic purpose took this writing task to a deeper and more meaningful level.
Webster chose a highly effective professional learning model to help teachers meet student learning outcomes with the Common Core standards in ELA. Grades kindergarten through 3 were front-loaded with professional learning occurring at least monthly for Lucy Cawkins' new program. And grades 4 through 5 also experienced professional learning around this writing that's demanded in the Common Core for deeper understanding of the shifts needed. Teachers were provided with the materials, but then they were also scheduled as PLC teams to support the new lesson planning and instruction. Amy Vanderwater and Deb Bussaworths have worked with Webster schools before in the Webster Writers and Writing Project Summer Series, and these ladies were the consultants that were chosen to work with our teams. Amy is not only a poet and an author, but she is also the new co-author of Lucy Cawkins' newest edition of the Units of Writing, which closely aligns to the Common Core. And Amy met with grades kindergarten through 3 in 3 to 4 PLC groups by grade level across schools multiple times throughout the year, and she helped us connect effective writing practice with the Common Core state standards, Lucy Cawkins' units, and also our Webster Student Works samples as we implemented the program. And that was a very powerful experience. Deb met with grades kindergarten through 5 in individual grade-level teams monthly by school to address the types of writing that are required by the Common Core, so we had that deeper understanding of how to align. We should be proud of this model in these times because we understand the dip that occurs in professional learning when new initiatives are put into place by our district and our state, and Webster teachers not only received the support they needed so that their focus could remain on students, but they also produced indicators that this was highly effective. New PLCs were formed across schools, and teachers were beginning to see themselves as experts and offer teaching to others through our WPLC this summer and throughout next school year. So when students see their teachers as confident, motivated writers, they want to be one, too. So this was a great project.
And the evidence of the effectiveness of all of the work that teachers and students have done is visible in every building, in every classroom. All you need to do is go into one of the elementary buildings and walk around, and you will see the great examples of Common Core writing that are hanging all over proudly displayed.
Some ways that we assess student writing are listed here. I'll talk about the DRE2 in just a moment, but if we also look at writing on demand, we can look at that and as simple as write your thinking on a sticky note for us. For example, in math, students have been asked, "Which do you think is larger, 10 tenths of a candy bar or one whole candy bar? Which would you rather have, and why?" Okay, quickly, write your answer and explain your thinking.
Okay, quickly, write your answer and explain your thinking.
It also can be, it also can be, in poetry. I did a poetry tag with a fourth-grade group, and each student was required to write a poem following the reading, once they were tagged by another student, and then they were immediately, they had to write and compose their own piece of poetry based on their connections.
In our building, literacy specialists meet twice a month on non-faculty or curriculum meeting days to share strategies and discuss specific students. We're also able to meet collaboratively with our own cohort throughout the district four times per year to share, discuss, and learn as our own professional learning community. With regard to the DRA2, we're able to utilize that instrument, and then with regard, not only for writing, for reading, but we're also able to use it for writing assessment. And then we can use it to collaboratively have conversations with classroom teachers for instruction and help teachers determine skill groups that they can work with and how they can work with them. As previously stated, writing lends itself to a natural differentiation. A topic, genre, or question may be the same, but the way it's addressed is very individualized. Lessons around bold beginnings or first-word choice may be introduced, then one-on-one or small-group conferencing is critical for the implementation of the necessary skills.
One of the strengths we've seen in utilizing Lucy Cockens as a resource has been the collaborative conversation teachers are having in their professional learning communities. Since teachers have a common resource to guide their work, they're able to reflect on how students are responding to writing lessons, share resources such as mentor texts, and discuss action steps moving forward. These conversations are grounded in evidence where teachers are bringing samples of student works to their reading and are able to discuss student growth. Having a common resource supports teachers to get through the entire work of a PLC process. The common resource also helps teachers see the vertical alignment, progression, and consistency from year to year.
As we move into the 2013-2014 school year, our goal for our elementary literacy program will be that all students engage in rigorous learning that is explicitly aligned to Common Core objectives every day. To support teachers in this endeavor, we will continue to focus on, attention on the standards themselves, their vertical articulation through the grade levels, how our own resources in Webster can be utilized to meet these goals, and of course, on our students' individual needs. All teachers will receive the most recent Common Core-aligned edition of the Writing Workshop units of study. We will be looking closely at resources provided by New York State to make meaningful connections between reading, writing, and content instruction. Training, support, and collaboration will begin this spring and summer and continue through the school year in a variety of settings, including superintendent's conference days, lead teacher meetings, curriculum meetings, and grade-level professional learning communities.
So, as you can see, this work together has been very successful. And there is more evidence displayed on the hallways of the schools that you can go and look at anytime you'd like. Do you have any questions for us about the report?
No questions, just a comment. Just some words that I took from the, the different people that were speaking, the different teachers. I heard student choice, collaboration, more meaningful, deeper understanding, assessment, sharing with colleagues, evidence. But there's one word or a series of letters I didn't hear any of you talk about that was APPR. And when I hear the words that I just repeated to you and I look at the rubric that at least I'm familiar with, that tells me that there's highly effective instruction. So, it's great to see, but the fact that none of you mentioned APPR, that tells me that regardless whether that would, is something that we need to do or not, you're doing it anyway. So, thank you. Great stuff.
Well said. That's true.
My comments were very similar to Prince's observations. I'm just totally impressed with the depth of work that the students are doing, but how comprehensively you integrated that and integrated the professional development for sure that that happens across the board and it's just what for second and third-grade students are doing is extraordinary. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I piggyback on what they said, and thank you for a really high-level professional presentation.
Thank you. Little video snips that we saw in there, were the Engage New York video snips. I like the, the way that all of you seem to make the students very comfortable in sharing what they've done, comfortable with it. There is no wrong answer, everyone learns from it, the peer instruction, and also your peer instruction between each other called collaboration. Just wonderful. Thank you.
Writing is sometimes about telling a story, and I'm wondering how we tell our story. How do we let our community know all the great things that are going on in our classrooms? I mean, you're doing it right now, but does our elementary report card reflect these standards that you're doing? Unfair question, I know, at this point, but something to be considering. You know, can, can we show our parents that our kids are doing this? You don't have to answer it.
I think when we have our parent conferences, that is the time, I think, when this message is conveyed the most. Our curriculum nights have been completely reworked, our parent conferences are completely reworked, and report card is something that we do have to think about. And so, how do we report differently because the, the Common Core expectations are different? So, we're working at it. It's a, it's a work in progress.
Can we tell our story?
We will.
All right, this does need action, board members, so may we entertain a motion to accept the K-5 literacy report, please. Thank you. Second? Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we should tell everybody to go home and read a nice book.
Yes, pick up your pen and write about it, too.
All right, we now move into our superintendent's report.
Yes. I'm going to begin by thanking everyone in the community who came out and voted May 21st. The entire district team is very pleased that our budget passed with over 60% of positive vote. So, we want to welcome newly-elected board members Paul Benz and Mike Guston. They'll begin their service beginning July 1st. I want to provide an update to my column which ran in The Post and The Herald last week regarding Webster's Odyssey the Mind team and, from Thomas, and actually, our student liaison had reported on it, so I'm just kind of extending that. The Webster-Thomas team did go to the Worlds, and the group represented, they, they spent four days in Michigan State University last week competing in the 2013 World Finals, and I'm pleased to tell you that the Thomas team finished an impressive ninth in the world out of 55 teams. So, we have their name up on the screen, and it's, their division was, it's how you look at it. And if you've ever been to an Odyssey the Mind presentation, it's a very creative, spontaneous presentation. It requires deep thinking, it requires creativity and spontaneity, so it really is a Common Core-aligned activity, and we're very pleased that our students perform so well. I'm told that our students interacted with partner team from India and spent time meeting young people from Korea, Singapore, China, and Germany. I'm also told that they have started planning for next year, so look out Worlds for Webster next year. Congratulations to everyone involved. And we say that the world is flat, and we say that our students will be competing in an international environment, and they had that real-world experience when they were at this competition. I also want to wish all of, all of our students, in these final days of secondary school especially and elementary school, it has been quite, quite a year. I don't think any of us could have imagined the amount of change that our students would face this year, that our teachers would face this year, that our parents would face this year, as we really took on the implementation of the Common Core, of the APPR, of the Data-Driven Instruction Initiative from the State Ed Department, and now it's all coming down to closure. And there have been many end-of-the-year assessments going on, we know. We know that our AP exams are completed, our secondary schools are just going into final exams. And I do just want to express appreciation for everyone for their efforts and for the strong way that we're finishing. You know, when you're in this kind of marathon that we feel like we've been in this year, the good, the, the mark of a great marathon runner is their ability to kind of run through pain and get to that finish line, and I know that from personal experience. So, I feel like we've been running a marathon, and there's been times when we've been very winded, and some of us has walked a little, we've regained our strength, but we are very near that finish line. And I'm just encouraging everyone to finish strong. We're very close. So, you know, if you have a few more exams left, pull it out, finish strong, you have what it takes to do well. And for teachers too, it's been quite the year, so I'm so impressed with the work that I see, I'm so impressed with how people are just pulling together to finish this year. And I just wanted to kind of give a few remarks and really call, shout-out congratulations to everyone for what we've been able to accomplish as a team this year in that regard. So, I also want to just highlight something pretty special. Last night, Webster hosted the Monroe County School Board's annual banquet. Now, this is school boards from all over the county, and we hosted this in Willing Cafeteria. That's because Sue Casey, who is not on the board tonight, but is part of our board, was, is the president, was elected president of Monroe County School Board. So, she chose this forum, and she did a wonderful job, as always, leading and emceeing the event, and you can see on the screen. And one of the wonderful things that we were able to do was to highlight a combined fifth grade, it was fourth and fifth grade chorus orchestra, really. Some students from fourth grade and some from fifth grade, but the cool thing was that this was students from all seven elementary schools. So, look at the number of students that filled the Willing Cafeteria stage, that were students from all seven buildings, and that was the first time they actually played together. So, they had been rehearsing in their different buildings, they came and they played led by our teacher, and all of the teachers were there, and it, the sound was amazing. Fourth and fifth-grade string students, and they filled the hall, and it was just delightful to listen to. And also then, in the back, we had posters of our AP art students, we had artwork on boards, and school boards from all over this region were so impressed with the potential and the talent just demonstrated by the students. Our very own Mark Balfour from Food Service catered the event and put on a marvelous dinner, and Sue Casey was our emcee. So, it was a wonderful night, just hosting the region and having all of that. Talk about being Webster School, it's proud, it was an amazing moment for, for myself to watch this happen. I know Janine was sharing in the event, Mike was at the event, and all of our school board members have been connected. Fritz, actually, your daughter played in that orchestra, so it was, it was quite a night. And I wanted also to, to just make one comment, too. We did celebrate our fifth-grade students as they, they worked on their integrated unit and is now, that's posted as a model for the state. Well, the state is back, and they're in Webster, and we've had two teams of state representatives now scouting all of our secondary schools, and they've, they've gone into 24 different teachers' classrooms, and they want to choose eight secondary teachers from our schools to make videos next year to post on Engage New York. So, we were working through a process with them. They had a great day today, we debriefed at the end of the day, and they saw some marvelous instruction going on in our secondary schools. They're especially looking for, they have a matrix of things that they need and content areas that they want to fill in, and they were having a hard time finding good Common Core lessons going on in math and science, and they found some here, and I'm so proud of that, as well as English and Social Studies. But, so we, we are delighted to have these guests, they'll be with us all day tomorrow again, and they'll be coming back in the fall to do some more videotaping, so our teachers can again be models for their colleagues around the state and for other states as well. So, it's a great way to end the week. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Adele. That was really great news to hear about that. We now move into board business. Jim, you are going to tell us about the April Treasures Report.
So, in front of you, you have the April Treasures Report, and total receipts for the month of April were about $3.7 million. The majority of that money, just over $2 million, came from real property taxes from the county, which was really the collections that weren't made by the town that get turned over, the county now paid us. The balance of that, about a million and a half, came from, due from other funds, as we got in federal funds that we have moved money from general funds to the federal funds as, as a borrowing, they have now paid us back. So, that amounted to about $3.5 million. So, at the end of the month, we had just over $68 million invested. On page two, you'll find the balances, starting balances and ending balances, along with the receipts and disbursements for school lunch, federal funds, capital, and trust and agency. And then on page three are the investments, and we have just over $71 million in investments. Interest rates range from .15 to .21 percent.
At least, it's not .0.
I'm really glad I'm leaving before we pay them.
Rates don't seem to be moving too quickly.
Entertain any questions the board might have. May we have a motion to accept the Treasures Report? Thank you, all in favor? Motion carries. We also have the resolution to adopt legal proceedings. Anything to say on that, Jim?
I'd say this was prepared by our attorney, Eric Wilson. It authorizes the superintendent to initiate legal proceedings to recover funds that were overpaid to a previous employee of the district, and I recommend the board adopt this resolution.
Any questions? Motion to accept resolution? Second? Thank you. All in favor? Motion carries. If you would, do we, do you need a roll call on that? No? Okay. Wasn't sure. Thank you. If you would take a look at the second reading of the board calendar, we have agreed that Monday, July 8th, there will also be a workshop, and I think we're looking at, is it August 1st?
Thursday, August 1st, for the retreat.
For the retreat, so that will be added.
The August TBD?
Yes, it'll be August 1st.
Okay.
I believe on our, Janine, you were the only one that couldn't make that date.
Which?
The August 1st.
Actually, we're probably better at the beginning of the month, so.
Okay. So, because that was the one date that we could have the most, and, okay. Well, thank you.
And then, like one other change, the July 2014 reunion meeting, it should be Tuesday, July 8th, not July 10th.
All right.
We're very busy.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else have any changes to be noted? May we accept the second reading of this calendar, please? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And we'll move on to board reports, or school liaison reports, rather. Fritz, anything? Janine?
No.
Tom?
The Plank North PTSA met last night, and they discussed their building survey findings. This dealt with supporting student learning and success and how the families and the school staff collaborated to support this development. There were some very interesting results, and even though this is one school's data, I do think it's a microcosm of the district, so I would like to share some of those findings with you at our summer retreat, because it does provide another lens to look at for us for our, our, our goal-setting date. So, besides what we'll hear from our focus groups, I'm just going to throw in one building's perspective, and we'll do that during the summer.
You heard about the Monroe County meeting last night? Tom, do you have anything to report on the NISBA?
Just that on the 17th, NISBA hosted the Deputy Commissioner, Slens, at NISBA headquarters. There was representatives from around the state, approximately 25 folks. Focus, of course, was on several things, and, and it was primarily, though, around some of the testing and, and when, when those tests will be expected back, so that, you know, proper moves and judgments can be made at the district level. It was, went on for almost three hours, and it was, again, well-represented but very thoughtful and thorough conversation. And the commissioner has told us that, you know, he plans to have more of these next year, we meet anywhere from three to four times a year.
Thank you, Tom. Janine, anything to report on audit?
I'm scheduling a lot of meetings.
Okay. Susan's not here for policy, but we're, I think we're basically done with policy for the year. We'll now move into our consented. Uh, we'll now move into our consent agenda. The board, you've had an opportunity to look at it. It includes minutes of our meetings, personnel actions, recommendations from the committee on special education and preschool, special education, plus some of the cooperative bids. Uh, may we have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, we, just to let the board know, we do have an executive session next Thursday, the sixth, and then we also have our last regular scheduled meeting of the school year on Thursday, June thirteenth. With that being said, may we entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.